I don't know if it was happy.
Yeah, I looked at all those. There's one that's a D two.
So then you can just put it in. So we got up here. So there's the.
Yeah, I fixed it.
Yeah.
It's not good.
So right, so I think.
Okay, I mixed up.
I mean, here before, after, but this may be up. So you just go to whatever.
So that's your regional challenge.
So you'll let them do it.
Okay.
So just put it in.
Yep.
Yeah.
No, I will, I will.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how about yourself?
Good, I'm excited.
Oh, yeah.
Alright, so they are gonna do the foot. Standard summer school. Summer. Yes. Yeah, this is the most. It was like twelve items. But well, there's only a couple. I'm like, right? I'm like, this is really confusing right now. I gotta read the agenda.
And I took my like ten thousand picture.
Happy that they do the. Kind of little doors up there.
Oh, no. Yeah, it would seem worse.
When I told him that. I know.
Okay, you can do that. I'll tell you. I will do that.
You know, Paul is certainly. So we're anymore. It seems like. This truly has. We had a good meeting. Asked a few questions. What he was.
Are they catching the fish on that? What do you? I for all that last weekend. Catching these big white fish.
They're fun, they're good news. And they've been.
Just wait next.
Alright. Good evening. Good evening, everybody. It's February twenty fifth, twenty nineteen. This is a public meeting of the school board of the West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than twenty-four hours prior to this meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of the meeting was posted in each school building, the entrance doors at the Education Service Center, and the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to the Daily News, WBKV, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. Please stand for the pledge.
Flag allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We've got all seven board members here tonight, so we recognize the quorum tonight. Deborah Ench is at a family funeral tonight, so we'll keep her in our thoughts and prayers. And we are videotaping, recording tonight, and so she promised me that when she gets the videotape, she'll put our minutes together so that they're posted and ready for approval at our next board meeting. Hopefully, our board members have had a chance to look over our agenda and pack it tonight. And if so, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
So I'm gonna make sure that I say out loud who makes our motions and seconds tonight, so Deb knows that. So a motion by Chris, second by Nancy. Any questions on the agenda? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll start with some recognition tonight of our dance teams. Who's doing that, Erin and Molly? Alright.
Alright, girls, come on up, West Dance team. You guys can come stand up in the front if you'd like and face out.
Alright, so for those of you who don't know me, I'm Erin Felber. I'm the West Athletic Director. And I'm absolutely honored and excited to be standing up here and recognizing our West Dance team. Congratulations, they qualified for state this year. And I'm gonna call up their coach, Amanda Motor, to tell you a little bit about their season.
Okay, well, first of all, I just wanted to thank you for inviting us tonight to be recognized on our bid for state. Oh, sorry. Starting off my first year head coaching with such a young team after the enormous success of last season was a little nerve-wracking, if I'm gonna be honest. However, the team did a phenomenal job pushing it when it mattered most. And I'm extremely proud of what the fifteen girls did this year and how they came together. Half new members and half old members. The dance is one team. We had a great season full of some amazing memories that we won't soon forget. Below are just a couple of the highlights of our season. So Hortonville Dance Invite, we took third place in D one kick, third place in D one jazz. Then we went to Ashwabhanam, the Dance Invite there. We placed second in, I'm sorry, we placed eighth in D two palm, eleventh in D one kick, and tenth in D one jazz. And I can't go without recognizing the fact that the girls finished learning their, the palm routine that the day before. So they did a phenomenal job for just finished learning. We didn't clean it, we didn't do anything but finishing up learning. So we also at this competition won the Most Spirited Team Award. And this award was voted on by all the high school teams at the invite. So it really, that really meant something to me and the girls too. So after that, we went to Watertown, the Dance Invite there. We took sixth place in Division Two Palm, fifth place in Division One Kick, seventh place in Division One Jazz. And then we went to Kokona, and we placed third in D two palm, fourth in D one jazz, and fifth in D one kick. And then next was Regionals. We placed sixth in D two palm, and third place in Division One Jazz, which qualified us for state. And when we went to state, we took twelfth place in D one jazz. So I will never be able to thank the girls enough for giving me the best, best year of coaching that I could have asked for. When I look back on the year, I couldn't be more grateful for every single second of the season. So really quick, I do wanna recognize our team. So we have our seniors, Leah Justman, and Lindsay Keller. Our juniors, Sabrina Higgy, Abby Kishesh, Marissa Miller, and Jada Williams. Our sophomores, Lacey Young, Serenity Addaway, Shelby Reese. And then our freshmen, Angela Holbrook, Ava Kahoot, Haley Sugar, Natalie Bales, Olivia Mathie, and Sarah Durjaski. And we had our captains, our Leah Justman, Lindsay Keller, and Jada Williams. And that's it.
Awesome, congratulations, ladies.
Come on up, East girls.
Serious hardware.
I know.
Hello, everyone, I'm Molly Hankston, the East Athletic Director. So I'm here this evening to introduce and recognize the East team as well. They qualified for D two in their jazz routine.
Why don't we have these ladies up front so that your folks can get a picture of you?
So we're here to celebrate and recognize all they've accomplished this year. And I'm going to introduce head coach Kaylee Pop, so she can tell you a little bit more about their season, their success, and most importantly, their state experience.
Thank you. I'm Kaylee Pop, I'm the head coach of the East Dance Team, and this is my second year coaching this team. The reason I had the girls bring all their hardware tonight was not to be boastful, but to show what a turnaround two seasons can make for a team. This was a team that two years ago, before the support of the school and the community, and I guess I have to give myself a little recognition. Coaching staff, we've had great coaches and choreographers and helpers with our team this year. And this went from a team that used to have six girls on the team and got last out of last at every competition, to a team that placed in all of their routines at every single competition. So I had to brag on them a little bit because they put in a lot of hard work. As the West team knows too, we start super early. It's like a nine, ten-month-long season. It's the longest sports season at the school, so it's very trying. And the girls have had amazing success this year, the most successful dance season in East Dance history. So I'm really proud of you guys. I'm gonna go through really quick our success this year. So we went to UDA Camp, which is a summer camp, and it's the first time they've ever gone to, go-away summer camp in like years and years and years. They placed third place in their home routine. We came home with four Spirit Sticks, one Super Spirit Stick, one Pin It Forward Award, one Coach's Excellent Award. Brianna Vitkus, you wanna raise your hand? We were here earlier this year, and she went to Rome for, she qualified as an All-American qualifier. Do you wanna say anything to the board about your Rome experience?
It was just a great experience. Different dancers from all different places.
Yeah, so Brianna and I, with the support of the team and the community, raised the $7,070 we needed to go on this once-in-a-lifetime, week-long trip to Rome, so she could dance in the New Year's Day Parade. And it was excellent, and I cried, and it was just, it was just a parade routine, but I was like bawling in the streets of Rome, but it was great. We won four Drill Down Ribbons, four Red Ribbons for routines, twenty-four Blue Ribbons for our routines, a Blue Ribbon for our home routine, and a Blue Ribbon for our team routine. The Blue Ribbon is the highest qualification you can get at camp. Hortonville, we got first place D two kick, second place D two jazz, fourth place D two palm. Tessa Zarillo got ninth place in her solo, Bailey Williams got seventh place in her solo, and Brianna Vitkus took second place in her solo with the second highest overall score of the entire day. Little Shoot, we got first place D two kick. That is the first time East Dance has ever beaten other teams to get a first-place trophy. So that was really excellent. Third place D two jazz by a point and a half, fifth place D two palm, fifth place overall duet, Jamie and Brianna. Eleventh place, or I'm sorry, eleventh and twelfth grade, first place overall solo, Brianna Vitkus. We also had nominations that day for best costume for jazz and kick. We went to the Freedom Competition, we got third place D two palm, fourth place D two jazz by half a point, and sixth place D two kick. Brianna got third place in her solo, Olivia and Tessa took second place in their duet, and Brianna and Jamie took another second place in their duet. At Kokona, we tied for first place in D two kick. We got third place in D two jazz, fifth place in D two palm. Jamie and Brianna, the last time doing their duet together, took first place overall of the entire competition for their duet. And Brianna Vitkus got first place overall for the eleventh and twelfth graders for her solo. At Eastern Regionals, we got fifth place in kick, and we took fifth place in D two jazz, which qualified us for state. The first time in five years that East Dance has gone to state as a team. Brianna Vitkus qualified for D two All-State Solo Finalist. This is the second time Brianna Vitkus has gone to state to represent the East Dance Team. And then at state, we got eleventh in D two jazz, and Brianna Vitkus made the D two All-State Team again for the second year in a row. So she is essentially, what that is, is the elite soloist of this category. And only sixteen out of the entire state made that team this year for the D two category. I also was nominated for WACPC's Coach of the Year, so I appreciate parents and people that had put in letters of recognition for that. The girls also won Colder Spotlight Commercial Contest, so they got the high school's name on the Colders commercials, so that was kinda fun to see ourselves on TV. Because of the fun we had at Homecoming with our mascot dancing along with us at the halftime performance, we got to take over UDA's Instagram story, the Universal Dance Association's Instagram, during the East's first playoff game of the season. And they have over forty-three thousand followers. So we got East High School and the Dance Team out to forty-three thousand followers. And lastly, to wrap up our success for the season, we won Varsity Spirit Brands Spirit Leader Award for the Most Spirited Dance Team in America. So that was amazing. We won a grant of $3,000 for the Dance Team, a trip for six of us to Disney World to accept the award. So we just got back from Disney about two weeks ago. And we will be featured on ESPN and also in American Cheerleader Magazine. And if you would like, girls, you can probably, well, just hold on a second. Can you guys see the screen? Cause I, I know they've seen the video, but why don't you guys just scoot over just a little bit so they can see the TV? Or see, yeah. Yeah. So if you guys don't mind, I just would like to share this short video with you that Varsity Spirit Brand put together about our school and our team. It's really, really cool.
The Varsity Brand School Spirit Awards Program was founded to recognize outstanding achievement by schools across the nation in categories ranging from superior sportsmanship to legacy coaching. One category, the American Spirit Leader Award, honors one dance team with an ongoing commitment to community service, outstanding school athletic support, creative spirit-raising activities, and strong academics. The 2019 award goes to an extraordinary dance team from West Bend East High School in West Bend, Wisconsin. The team's mission is to represent their school by being good role models who are deeply involved in both school and community life. They are highly visible, performing and assisting at community events throughout the year, including a Dancing With Our Stars show featuring local community leaders and rival schools. For a school that shares a building with its town rival, the West Bend East Dance Team has stepped up to make the school a positive, inclusive environment by inviting the opposing team to share the stage at local events. They hold themselves to high standards of cultivating a positive. They hold themselves to high standards of cultivating a positive attitude, becoming the best dancer and young woman that each can be, and challenging themselves to succeed We congratulate the great contributions made by the West Bend East Dance Team and honor them with the 2019 American Spirit Leader Award.
So all in all, we just want to thank the school board and our community for all the support this year because if it wasn't for our school and our athletic directors and our principals, we wouldn't have had the success we had. And just really quickly, I'm just going to say the girls' names. So, girls, if you just want to like raise your hand when I say your name. Freshman Michaela Craighead, freshman Emma Henry, freshman Abby Frederick, fresh, or sorry, sophomore Maddie Bagley, sophomore Jocelyn Clark, sophomore Sierra Erickson, sophomore Genevieve, sophomore Olivia Langdon, sophomore Morgan Lichtensteiger, sophomore Kiera Price, sophomore Bailey Williams, sophomore Tessa Zarillo. Yes, we have a lot of sophomores. Junior Brianna Vitkis, senior Jamie Newman, and senior Erin Subly. So, thank you guys very much.
Congratulations to both teams. I think this was the first time in a long time that both teams have made it to state the same year, so very, very cool. I've seen both teams perform, and you're both awesome, so very cool. We'll move on to our student reports with Libby and Jacob.
So again, I'd just like, you guys are a great group of girls. Congratulate you guys on going to state. I had the pleasure with actually dancing with them at the Homecoming pep rally. And let it be known that I think I sweat more at their dance practice than I did at the football practice I had before it. Well, both teams do, it's pretty amazing. So to continue with the East Athletics, East Girls Basketball ended their regular season last week in the first round of playoffs. They lost in a tough match against Plymouth, 47 to 41. The team is going to miss its seniors Megan Lemke, Abbot Nastik, Summer Schneider, and Auburn Larson next season. A highlight of the season, Auburn Larson became only the second person in program history to reach the 1,000-point mark. So that's pretty cool. Boys Basketball is, ended their regular season 14-7-1 last week in a win against West and clinched a first-round playoff bye. Suns seniors Zach Smith, TJ Simpson, and Dylan Polster asked me to ask you guys to come to the game on Friday night. We're looking for a big crowd. This is the first time in a long time that East has had a first-round playoff bye, so it should be a really good game. This last weekend, East Wrestling sent the Slasher Brothers, Cooper and Crosby, to Madison to participate in the state tournament. The entire team made it through the regional matches, but only sent two to state tournament. Crosby got out in the first round sadly, but being a sophomore, he's looking forward to his future. And Cooper made it to the final day of competition and ended fifth in state. The Suns will be saying goodbye to senior wrestlers Nathan Brockman and Cooper. Mackenzie Phillips and Maddie Bentley will be competing for the state tournament this Friday in Green Bay. They're going to be bowling, that's pretty cool. And today, East Athletics had a signing day, if the board wants to look up on the TV. We had seven seniors sign on to play athletics in the collegiate level. Caleb Canole, Matthew Clark, and Jack Adniss all signed on to play at the University of Wisconsin Lacrosse, their football program. John Daly and Mason Kirk are going to be playing football for the University of Wisconsin, Oshkosh. And Taylor Rappi will be playing football for the University of Wisconsin-O'Clare. Katie Albrecht will be playing volleyball next season for the University of Wisconsin Stevens Point. I'll pass it over to Libby now.
Awesome, thank you. I'd like to start out talking a little bit about some of our like Coalition Combination Teams. So the Boys Swim and Dive competed at the state championship on the 16th. Jackson Rod took 19th in the 122nd in the 50, and Kevin Fitzgerald took eighth in the 500. The Ski-Snowboard Team competed in lacrosse for their state meet two weekends ago, with boys taking second overall and girls taking third, which is really awesome. And the Girls Hockey Team, the Lightning, ended their season 9-13, and their only West player on the team, Kayla Carmichael, won Most Improved Player. The Boys Basketball Team plays in Beaver Dam on Tuesday. And the Girls Basketball Team narrowly lost in the regional final, 44 to 42 to Slinger on Saturday, but ended their season with a very impressive 20 to 4 record. And then also, West Gymnastics competed at Sectionals this past weekend with Olivia, senior Olivia Burns, taking fifth place in a three-way tie in beams, so she'll be competing at the individual state in Wisconsin Rapids this Saturday. Also, we've got some really great extracurricular things going on at the high school right now. So the Winter Guard competed at the WGI Regionals in Naperville this past Saturday and took fourth place. So this is our high school's first year with a Winter Guard team, but they're very proud of their fourth place as there were schools from all over the Midwest competing. Also, the Winter Musical Happy Days happened this past weekend, so we want to congratulate them for all of their hard work they've been putting in. Also, the West Bend High School Multicultural Club is holding their Second Annual Black History Month Celebration that will take place in the Silver lining Art Center on Thursday, February 28th at 6:30 PM. So doors open at 5:30. It's free and open to the public, and they've got an awesome event planned with refreshments, raffles, door prizes, entertainment, and vendors, so they invite the community to come and celebrate with them. And finally, on February 24th, the Kettle Marine Symphony Orchestra is having a combined concert with the Chamber Orchestra. It's at 3 PM and will be held at the Slinger High School. So lots of exciting things going on, and we want to thank you again for having us.
Libby and Jacob, thank you. We've come to the public participation portion of our agenda. Is there anybody that wishes to address the board tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Tonight on our consent agenda, we have minutes of the February 4th regular board meeting, dispersments posted to February 25th, 2019, revenues and expenses in the aggregate July of 2018 through January of 2019, the Head Start Status Report, a resignation, and a ratification of a contract. At this time, I'll make a motion to approve our consent agenda.
Second.
I'll take the motion myself and give the second to Nancy there. Any questions on the consent agenda? All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Our consent agenda is approved. Andy Sarno, can I have you come up to the podium? And Superintendent Kirkagard, since we just ratified a contract here and made it official, I'd like to ask you to introduce Andy.
It is my privilege to introduce our new Director of Finance, Andy Sarno. Andy has been a Director of Finance in several communities and was in Green Bay, up in Beaver, or over in Beaver Dam, as well as Hartford. Recently had a stint in Minnesota and saw the light and decided to come back to Wisconsin. And so he's no longer a, in the Vikings country, he's back over in Packers country. And so Andy started last Monday, or actually, last Tuesday, was here for part of Monday, and will be here full-tilt. And so we are extremely pleased that Andy is on board. I just couldn't be happier with our hire. And so we look forward to Andy being part of the team. And so Andy, if you have any couple comments you'd like to say, we sure appreciate them.
Yeah, I'm very excited to be a part of the West Bend School District. It's very humbling. I'm excited. Education is my family business, that's how I describe it, with several relatives that have been in the past and currently are in education. I like knowing that the impact that I have and what I do with some of the finance and operations does make that impact in creating a whole child through their academics, the co-curriculars, arts, athletics, and whatnot. So I'm excited to be here. I'm a little bit of a nerd in that sense that I like that budgeting process, and I like helping everybody, community members, board members, staff, learn where funding comes from and how we're spending that money and creating a transparent process through that. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer, but please just know that I'm very excited to be here and I look forward to relocating to the area.
Great. Nice to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to our action items tonight. Our first one is the Boys Hockey Co-op One-Year Renewal Agreement. I think, Erin, are you doing that one? All right.
So we have the Ice Bears Boys Hockey Co-op, and I am in charge of it for, we had eight schools this year that participated. It's a one-year co-op agreement, and we had 19 students from West Bend between East and West combined, so 44% of the team makeup was West Bend students. And my proposal is that we renew our contract. We have Living Word, who has decided not to be in our co-op this year. They didn't have any students participate for the past couple of years, so they have opted out of being on the co-op agreement. And so with board approval and superintendent approval, I would like to renew our Ice Bears Co-op.
I move to approve the one-year renewal of the Ice Bears Boys Hockey Co-op for the 2019-2020 school year.
All right, we've got a motion by Nancy and a second by Tiffany. Any questions on this?
I'd like a discussion. First of all, I am really grateful for this opportunity for the girls and the boys, but I think that this is the kind of thing that can set West Bend apart from other districts, the fact that we can offer this kind of opportunity, especially for girls. So thank you very much.
Absolutely. And so if you want me to just go with the Lightning as well for the Girls Co-op?
Hang on just a second. We need to vote on this one real quick. Any further questions? That's all right. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Go ahead.
So for the Girls Co-op, we had five total between East and West participate this year, so four from East and one from West. There are quite a few other, so it's Cedarburg, Cedar Grove, Belgium, Germantown, Homestead, Brookfield Academy, Living Word, Port Washington, Slinger, both West Bends, and Grafton, who is involved in the Girls Co-op. Cedarburg is actually in charge of that co-op, so we do not have to submit the co-op agreement to the WIA, but just wanted to let you know that we would like to be a part of the Lightning Girls Co-op Hockey Team for another year.
Okay, so now I have a couple of questions. So if all of these students are from all different schools, who are they competing against, or where are most of their games, and how does that all work?
Sure. So we are part of the North Shore Conference, so for hockey, and there's, Homestead has their own team for both boys and girls. And Nicolay has a co-op team, which is Nicolay, Shorewood, and Whitefish Bay. And then for the Girls team, they travel a little bit further. They're playing against Arrowhead, they're playing against Brookfield East, Brookfield Central. There are several different co-ops. I would say our Boys team probably stays a little bit closer than the Girls, just because there happens to be at this time more boys teams for hockey than there are for Girls.
So do you need us to approve this as an action item?
I don't believe I do.
I believe you do, because we have to sign off on that one as well.
Sure.
There's a spot where we have to send the information into the State Athletic Association, and so everybody has to sign. So even though we aren't responsible, we're going to have to sign off, just like everybody else has to sign off on ours as well. So you do need board action.
Perfect. I have a couple more questions, and maybe you don't know the answers, but maybe Don does, or I don't know, somebody. We can make some up too, whatever works there. So, okay, I understand how regular sports work. So because this is a co-op and we have kids from other schools, how do you determine the cost? Is it like if we have 12 of the 24 are West Bend kids and we pay half, or how does that work? Do you want to speak? You don't have to be exact, I'm just wondering.
We are just in the process for the West, I mean for the Boys, to look at that whole process. And right now, it really is based on a, the percentage. And so if we have 50% of the kids, we pay 50% of the cost. If we have 25%, we pay 25%. So we pay significantly more for boys than we do for girls, because the Girls only has five kids total between the East and West. The Boys has about half. And so in the past, it was strictly a student expense, student and/or parent expense for that. But since hockey truly is a sport that's part of the Athletic Association, we really are going forward with the idea that they're not any different than football, or basketball, or track, or anybody else. And as long as it's a recognized sport, we'll pay the half out of our athletic fees, just like we would pay for the cost of a track team or a golf team, but it'll be proportional to the number of participates, participants on the team. Is that pretty, is that?
Absolutely. And I think, big picture down the road, it would be wonderful if we had enough West Bend students to truly make it a West Bend Co-op. So I think we're headed in that direction.
Well, you know, I'm all about fair and equal with sports, so just happy to hear that. And I will make the motion then to approve, even though there's nothing written here, what am I, approve the Girls Hockey, West Bend Girls Hockey Co-op for one year, for the 2019-2020 year?
Second.
So a motion by Nancy and a second by Chris. Any further questions, discussion?
I just one comment to Nancy. My goddaughter played for the Ice Bears for four years, Emily Breckinridge, and the friendship she met at all the other schools and the camaraderie. And I attended some of those games, and they got a fair number of West and East students to come down to their games. A lot of them are in Cedarburg at a nice facility down there, so I don't know. It's a growing in popularity, I think, sport among our youth, so.
Absolutely. Who doesn't love hockey?
Yeah, who doesn't love going to a hockey game?
Any more questions, discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. That motion carries. Erin, I'm going to send this one down to Superintendent Kirkagard for his signature, and I don't know if you need that tonight, but he'll have it. All right, we'll move on to our 2019 Summer School Offering. Laura Jackson.
Today I'm presenting for the Summer School Offerings for the 2018-19, the report for the Summer School in the 2018 Summer, and the program approval for the 2019 Summer School Program. So overall, our purpose in summer, for Summer School is both enrichment and remediation. We provide enrichment classes across the board for students at all levels. We also offer an opportunity for students to really practice skills that they had not fully attained during the course of the school year or at the high school if they need some credit recovery. Summer School serves that purpose of credit recovery as well. During the 2018, the summer of 2018, that is considered an extension of the 2017-2018 school year. We had, the number of students is listed, as you can see on the chart. The total FTE is different than the enrollment number. The FTE is calculated for Summer School, they attend partial days, so the number of students does not necessarily reflect the full-time equivalents that attend. So Summer School in the 2017-18 school year had an attendance of 127 full-time equivalent students. And that is up from 100, oh, I'm sorry, in, we had 125 this past summer. In the summer previous, we had 127, and the summer prior to that, 121 full-time equivalent students. The total cost, so how Summer School was funding was done locally, and with the state involvement has shifted over the years. So if we look at the total revenue column, that tells you how much was coming in from the state. The student fees represents other revenue that previously was collected. We are, we no longer are able to collect student revenues for just overall course fees. There are certain specific things that you can collect fees for, but that's on a, on a very specific basis. So we no longer charge any overall student fees for courses. So the total revenue for this past year was just above $479,000. Our total expenses for this year were just above $333,000, so we have a net gain of about $145,000 from Summer School. So our program dates for Summer School are listed on the slide. We will not be having class on July 4th or July 5th. So elementary will begin on June 17th and go through July 12th with no Summer School on the 4th or 5th. Middle School will be, follow the same as the elementary. And high school has four-week courses and five-week courses. And the dates, so the dates for the five-week course just extends another week into July. You had the opportunity to look at the course offerings, so we do have several new courses this year that were not previously offered. Those include creative writing and personal finance at the high school level, some coding, summer book clubs, STEAM classes, a West Bend Survivor class at the middle level. New this year is also a Jump Start to Badger that has been popular for kindergarten, for Silver Book, for those transition years, and based on parent request, Jump Start to Badger was added. At the elementary level, some STEAM classes, so STEAM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Mathematics. Each of those classes involve some coding at various levels for our students. There is also a camp STEAM at the elementary level. There is also a camp STEAM at the elementary level. Do you have any questions about?
Does the personal finance, so that will give the students then their requirement for graduation?
Correct. So, all of the high school classes that are generally for, generally all of our high school classes are for credit. So, all of the FIAID, all of, everything is for credit. The state requires that students attend all, but they can, we can allow up to two absences during the course of Summer School, if they're going to get credit for the course.
Laura, what is our marketing strategy? We're offering some great classes. It's probably a really relief, great relief to parents to see these enrichment programs offered, but how are they getting the word?
So, through the website, through school newsletters, through teacher contacts with parents at various times, like parent-teacher conferences. At the elementary level, teachers may recommend specific classes. At the high school level, through their work with their guidance counselors as they're doing their course planning, and at, so, eighth graders transitioning to high school are taking the high school level courses. So, during their transition meeting as well, that's another time when parents are hearing from staff directly about that. Again, it'll be on the website. We have not, we do not globally send out the Summer School book, but again, announcements from each of the schools to their specific clients will be available.
And then, last year, I had a parent reach out to me, and her daughter was in kindergarten in a private school, and she's like, Tiffany, I don't think she's allowed to attend public school. I said, absolutely not. That's the beauty of public schools. Any child in the district is welcome to attend, but that might be a point that needs to be made clear, right? If you're a student in the district, K through 12, you are welcome to attend our Summer School. We'd love to have you.
Correct. So, I'm, great point. Our private school students are able to attend, as our homeschool students are able to attend the Summer School program, as long as they're residing in this district during the summer.
Joel, just a quick comment, and Laura, you can elaborate further. We looked at Summer School, can we significantly enhance our numbers to increase our revenue, okay? And so, obviously, we're trying to do things to increase our revenue, increase our numbers. The problem is that it doesn't have much of a short-term impact. So, if you look at the FTE, or total student classes, about 3,500, which equivalates, equivalents to about 125 students. So, you really have to have about 700 in the total students to get 25 kids. And then, when you look at budgeting in the state revenue, it's a three-year average, okay? And so, the fact that we have 25, if we increased our number of Summer School students by this amount, we can increase our number of kids, but then it has to have a three-year average before we really generate the revenue. And so, we're doing everything we can to get more kids. The reality is, we could significantly increase the number of kids and probably make less money in the short term, because our expenses would have gone up, and we wouldn't see the revenue increase for three more years because of the three-year average. Is that, is that a fair statement?
That's fair. We are reporting out by the number of courses, so some of those, like, one child might take three courses.
Right, right.
But the total FTE, absolutely, about 700 to get to another FTE.
Great. Any more questions? I move to approve the offering, I move to approve offering a 2019 Summer School program pre-K through grade 12.
Second.
Motion and a second by myself. And Toni, any further discussion questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to our third reading of Board Policy 224, which is our Board Superintendent Relations. We've had this in front of the board for, this is our third reading, obviously, and it's made it through our Policy Committee. Are there any further questions, discussions on this?
I move to approve new Board Policy 224, Board Superintendent Relations.
Second. Motion by Chris and a second by myself. Any further questions, discussions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? And that motion carries. We'll move on to our Silverbrook Intermediate School Report from our Principal Ms. Durrell and Assistant Principal Ms. Galdnick.
Lance and Heather are here, and they have a little video to kind of introduce themselves a little bit more. And so, we have a phenomenal school at Silverbrook, and these are two of the reasons why we're as successful as we are. So, take it away, Lance and Heather.
So, we have a fantastic group of students at Silverbrook, obviously, and we also have a really healthy video club that enjoys streaming our weekly announcements. So, instead of introducing ourselves, or having Don do it, we figured we'd allow them to do it this week.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to a special edition of the Silverbrook Streamed Announcements. I am Jacob Jones, a sixth grader at Silverbrook.
And I'm Alex Lucasavage, a sixth grader, a student at Silverbrook. Good evening, Ms. Galdnick.
Good evening.
How long have you worked in the West Bend School District?
I've worked in the West Bend School District for five years.
What is your educational background and other work experience?
I graduated from Marion University, earning a master's degree in educational leadership and curriculum instruction. I, before West Bend, I've worked for 17 years in the Pawke School District in positions as a third grade and sixth grade classroom teacher, a sixth and eighth grade computer science teacher, a K-12 gifted and talented coordinator, and the assistant principal at the intermediate building at Pawke.
Wow, what extensive background you have, Ms. Galdnick.
Hello, Ms. Durrell.
Well, hi, Jacob. How are you doing?
Good.
Good.
Could you share a little of your education background with the audience?
I'd love to. I attended McLean Elementary School, Silverbrook Middle School, and graduated from West Bend East. After that, I did my undergraduate work at UW-Platteville, got my first job working at Badger Middle School as a seventh grade language arts teacher. After that, I worked at Slinger Middle School as the assistant principal, after earning my administrative degree from Concordia University. And then, I came back to Silverbrook. This is my 10th year, first as an assistant principal, and the last nine as the principal at Silverbrook. Best job in the world.
Looks like you built quite a career for yourself, too, Ms. Durrell.
Thanks, Jacob.
Thank you for tuning in tonight. Check us out Thursday mornings as our team streams the Silverbrook announcements. Good luck with the rest of your presentation, Ms. Durrell, Ms. Galdnick.
Thanks, guys.
The young boy on the right, black shirt, he was at the Optimist Club. I went to the Optimist last Thursday, and he was the Student of the Month. And he was just as enthusiastic, and just as well-spoken at the Optimist Club as he was here. So, he really was quite a young man.
And the thing to know about this is, we do the streamed announcements every week, and the team does this themselves. So, these boys come in during their recess time, and they put together the announcements, they prep it, they're ready to go. And then, on Thursdays, Heather provides some technical support, but they really run the whole show. So, they do a really great job.
Which also then led to fitness frenzies. We do a little fitness warm-up a few times a month, too, and get everyone active and moving, all online. So, it's streamed through the building, which is pretty neat. So, our next slide up before you, and I'm going to switch spots over here. All right, we'll go back and forth. Lot of opportunities at Silverbrook. As you can see, we have 320 students participating in band. Fifth and sixth graders have three world language options at Silverbrook to choose from. We have a lot of students involved in co-curriculars and co-lubs. So, 36% of the students at Silverbrook are involved in something extra beyond the school day. 280 students participating in orchestra, and 320 students in choir. So, in addition to that, this year, we have 23 co-curricular offerings for students, and that's based on student interest or interests of staff. So, like a garden club, different music groups that meet. This year, we have a chef's club, where they're cooking and making different little snack-type things for students that are interested. In that, a pet pals' club, where the advisor brings in different animals and things, raising money for animal shelters and things like that. So, a lot of opportunities at Silverbrook. Silverbrook's made up or consists of a house system, if you're not familiar with it. So, we have 12 houses at Silverbrook. So, thinking about all the students coming from the elementaries, coming all together at Silverbrook, it's kind of a house or a school within a school concept, if you will. So, small groupings of students. Our houses consist of two to three classroom teachers, where the students rotate between the teachers, focusing on math, literacy, and science and social studies. So, staying in that house area, not having to move around the larger building.
All right, next up, we're going to focus on three areas related to our SIP. And the first, and obviously, most important, is the student learning. Some of our key strategic actions include unpacking standards. So, with the help of the curriculum coordinators this year, the Silverbrook staff has spent a good amount of time unpacking their standards. So, our content area teachers and our key teachers or specials teachers have spent PD days, after-school time, unpacking their standards, getting familiar, and then understanding how to translate those to the classroom and help with their instruction. We also have been focused on integrating the data into action model, and you may have heard that in some previous presentations, but it's really a strategic way to, and systematic way to look at data and help integrate that into our practices at Silverbrook also. One of our strategies, particularly in the science, social studies, and ELA areas, is using text evidence. So, when our students are asked to write about a particular topic, they're asked to go back into the text and actually reference what they've been reading to help connect to the text. Another strategy is exit tickets. So, our math teachers this year, in order to really gauge what their students are learning on a day-to-day basis, are collecting exit tickets from the students, so they have a handle on what they need to change or tweak or adjust for tomorrow's instruction, using those. The math team is also, particularly sixth grade, created some teacher, teacher-created videos to help parents engage with the homework. I know one of the most common things I hear from parents these days is, I don't know what kind of math these students are doing. It's so much different than what we used to do or what we learned. And one of those connection strategies to bridge that gap that the sixth-grade teachers came up with was creating videos to help explain the work that their students had done in class that day, and then they're linked on their Canvas pages. So, again, just kind of an engagement strategy for those parents. And then, finally, at Silverbrook, in our language arts classes, we believe strongly in the connection between teacher and student on an individual or small group level. And thereby, we do what's called conferring in language arts, where on a regular basis, our language arts teachers are meeting up with students and focusing on particular areas for those kids to grow in and get stronger in. So, I've got a sample. One of our fantastic language arts teachers is Jenny Beck. She's a leader in the building, and I wanted to give you, show you a little sample of what this sounds like in practice.
Well, I'm just wondering about that little incident and how it changes her. So, we...
Because she is, she's capping for everything, but then, when they leave without her...
Right.
Then, she just like, there's like no kind of capping, because they just stop the alarm.
Okay. And then, when they return, I'm wondering how her reaction to, when they return, changes the plot. So, this is what I'd like you to do, because your reading is, you're doing really well with your reading, and you're remembering a lot more of the plot, Amaya, than you do. I think it's because you keep taking notes. You know, and the plotline diagram really showed that. So, I think what I want you to do is to, you go for the next time, would be to watch, and I'd like you to kind of work on this after market, do I? Okay. Is to watch where DC comes home for that part, okay?
I can bring this home, and then I can look in and make sense.
I think, yeah, because I think I'd like to continue that discussion with you, and to notice Melody's actions, and how it changes the plot, okay? Because that, I think, is really going to change your attitude of the plot direction, okay? Awesome. So, you did a good job of reading today.
So, that's, that's an excerpt from about a five-and-a-half-minute conference that Jenny did with that student. And you can see, not only is she taking notes for herself on what to continue working on with that student, but she's also providing reminders for that student that she put then into her book, and that as she's reading, she'll continue to work on those things and remember what they talked about in their conversation. Hi, Toni.
Hi. So, is that just for that student? Or is that for the student's parents, or is that for the class?
That is, that is just for that student. So, she's conferring with that student. She does that with each of her students in language arts.
Okay, great. And then, is that camera on a little tripod, or is someone holding that camera?
The camera was in my hand.
Okay, okay.
Was it shaking a little bit?
But you probably don't do that for all of this conferring.
No, I wanted to show you guys a sample of that, just for tonight.
Okay, I apologize. I thought maybe that was something...
No, 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 no.
Okay, okay, got it. Okay, got it.
Just to show you guys. All right. Yeah, you bet.
So, our next area is safe and secure with our SIP. So, our safety team, we, Silverbrook, developed a safety team a few years ago in response to a survey that we gave to staff. So, we have our own Silverbrook Safety Team. It came up as an area for growth for us, all coming together. So, that safety team works on different things, like fire drills, how to be more effective with those, different safety procedures that we would run in the building. And so, since developing that team and that team working, along with the emergency response team, the survey results get better every year that we get it, that people feel more safe in our building. The emergency response team was also a team that was put together based on staff survey. We were also the first building in the district to be certified. Positive Behavioral Intervention System, so we gave a survey again to teachers in April of 2018. So, in terms of teams, interventions, evaluation, our staff feels that Tier One is 93% implemented, and our Tier Two at 92% implementation, which are great, great feedback for us. And Lance is going to give you a sample of, our school is also going through trauma-sensitive schools training. Anne Keaslick, one of our school counselors, is a certified trainer who has been training our staff. This is one of the activities that our staff has completed. So, on there, you see it's a crossword puzzle. There's an A slip and a B slip. And so, staff would work together. One person, if you flip it over, has directions that are on the B card, and the other person has the directions that are on the A card. And we're not going to do this tonight, but just to give you an idea, the two people are working on the crossword puzzle together, but they're coming at it from different directions. One, it's expecting that something else is going to happen, and the other one's just giving that positive feedback. And the purpose of the activity is just to show how all students are coming to school and have different backgrounds and what they're, what they're expecting. So, the staff really enjoyed that activity, and it was really extremely eye-opening.
And the other emphasis, when you talk about trauma-sensitive schools, is really building empathy and capacity of the staff. So, an activity like that really helps staff maybe gain a little different perspective on where students are coming from, you know? And when you're operating, you know, from that fear perspective, it really impacts how you're able to succeed in school or not. And we've participated, there are seven modules for trauma-sensitive training that are, that are part of the system, and our staff has completed four of them so far. And our plan is to complete the remaining three this year. And again, you know, the next slide has to do with engagement and culture. And when you talk about student engagement and really building a strong culture, that means it's inclusive for everyone at the school, no matter what they're experiencing. And trauma-sensitive schools feeds right into that. Some other strategies related to engagement and culture include some communication pieces that we do with the staff. So, every week, we do a staff bulletin with announcements, did you know? So, every week, we do a staff bulletin with announcements, "Did you know?" kind of thing, to make sure people are in the know as much as possible. Every Monday morning, we meet out. We did one today out in the front main hallway of Silverbrook, and we have a different document for that that has the events for the upcoming week, celebrations from the previous week, and it's any staff who'd like to come to ask questions or to share in those celebrations, come on Monday mornings, and we do that for about seven minutes and then break it down and then go off and do the day and have a great week. So, a couple pieces there. As far as students go, every month, we have Viking Pride assemblies. Joel has participated in one or two of those last few years where we recognize our Students of the Week. We have student performances, and we also have a community component. It may be a community fundraiser. We do quite a bit with the veterans in town in the VFW. They'll come in and share their time with us. We also knew this year, Heather talked about fitness frenzy. So, every other week on Wednesdays, we have the FIAD department livestream fitness activities for about 10 minutes to the whole school. So, everybody's got their sweats on, and they're doing squat thrusts and, yep, kickboxing and all kinds of fun activities to, you know, get everybody going and encourage fitness in the building. Embedded PD is a strategy that we have as well. So, you know, our past model was to have two staff meetings a month, and as exciting as that was, we figured we could be a little bit more efficient and go to one staff meeting a month and then have the other time dedicated to staff's professional development. So, earlier this year, my leadership team, along with their colleagues, came up with different items that would support their professional growth and also our site improvement plan. So, once a month for about an hour, they have time to work on those projects, unique and specific to what they're working on, so really to support their work. And then, teams and teamwork is a last and probably the most important part of our culture at Silverbrook. And we asked the question, and that's in your packet, I believe, too, why is Silverbrook a great place to learn and work for both staff and students? And with input from 70-plus staff, these are the key words that came out of that and that really speak to what Silverbrook is all about. As I mentioned, I've been there quite a while, and it's always been about the culture and it's always been about the people at Silverbrook. And, you know, the West Bend School District is a great place to live and work, and Silverbrook's, I think, a great representation of that, too. We have great people, and they do great things every day, and this is what they have to say about it. So, with that, I would encourage you to come and visit us. We do team pictures every year, so I think we've got every picture of every team in our building, including our facility guys. So, Pat and the boys down in the bottom, and our lunch ladies are in part of the team, too. So, this is us, and check us out. Come on over to Silverbrook. Thanks for taking the time.
Very good. Thank you very much. Any questions for the gang at Silverbrook?
You're interested in my career day?
So, one of the changes with the new five-six model, that's Angie Noiser, one of our fifth-grade teachers, is-
Organizes the new career day.
Right. So, we've been doing the JA Biz Town for the last four years, and part of that, you know, is a big connection to careers for our fifth graders. And for the second year, last year Tristan Hayes organized a career day for fifth graders. Oh, standby.
Okay.
And this year Angie kind of upped the ante and did a full-blown career day. So, yeah, I'm sure you've got Kurt's name written down, so we'll include him next year. But, yeah, that just happened two weeks ago. So, awesome event bringing in, how many people came in? How many different community people?
Yeah, 24 business and government officials.
So, yeah, so it continues.
I was invited this year. I went and talked about Caterpillar this year, so that was fun for me. Thank you very much. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thanks again, thank you.
All right, moving along with all the snow days that we've had this year, I think Jennifer Gitterman's been taking a peek at our calendar to make sure we're still DPI compliant, so we'll have a quick discussion on that.
Yes, well, thank you. Good evening. I'm happy to be here to talk about our calendar. Just to take a step back in time, during the last school year, we approved this school year's calendar. A committee came together to create that. Always, whenever we create any calendar, our primary focus is meaningful instruction for students. During last year, at the December 11th school board meeting, the board voted to approve the start and end date of September 3rd and June 6th for the school year calendar. So, tonight, with all the weather that we've, that Mr. Kierker-Guard has really brought with him, we've been joking about that because, you know, we have some time built in for snow days, and we have said, "You know, Mr. Kierker-Guard, we haven't had many snow days lately," that sort of thing. He's like, "Well, just wait, just wait." And so, we feel he brought the weather with him. So, with instructional minutes that are a requirement for the Department of Public Instruction, like I said, the meaningful instruction is always our first priority. The number of minutes is different by each level, and so the number of minutes at each school also varies based on recess time, passing time, lunchtime, that sort of thing. When we had started to have so many snow days, we were doing okay as far as the minimal requirements, but once we hit up into the past four days, that was an area where we had to come together and put our minds together of what is really best for our students and our, our system as a whole. At that time, we decided to add the Student Day of March 1st, so this Friday, as a Student Day, rather than just a Professional Day for staff. And shortly after that, communication went out, we had another snow day. And so, what we've done is we looked at the overall minutes at each level, as well as trying to find some meaningful instruction rather than just adding on, you know, two minutes here or two minutes there. And so, what we have here is a summary of just some of the changes that, of where we're at as far as instructional minutes. So, on this presentation, you'll see that, the first slide here for 2018-19, you'll see at the end of the school year, we had March 1st, that is the day that is circled, and it will now be a Professional Day. Once we had that sixth snow day, that's when we started to look at what are our options. We've really looked at all sorts of different options, one including that April 22nd day of, could we make that day work in our system? And after investigating that a little bit more, it really wasn't possible since it was an off day for staff and students. So, we continued to look at just a variety of different options, and what we have here is, as we move forward, looking at March 1st is not circled because that is a regular Student Day. April 22nd, which is one of the possible days that we looked at, that will continue to be an off day for students and staff. And then, looking at the end of the school year, you'll see that there is a Professional Day scheduled on the 7th, that is the same. There's also a Professional Day on the 10th, which is the same, and then additional Professional Day on the 11th. So, while the Professional Days are changed a bit on here, I want to speak to the minutes as far as how each level would be impacted. So, at the high school level and for pathways, June 5th and June 6th, which was previously an early release day, would be a full day for all the students. That's typically the exam time, so we're working with the high school administrative team of what that would look like. It could incorporate some time for additional support for students before the exam, but that schedule is yet to be finalized. We do plan to have that communication out as soon as possible, but we do have some meetings scheduled with the high school administrative team. For kindergarten through eighth grade, including pathways, Thursday, June 6th would be a full day. This is previously scheduled as an early release based off of the high school early release dismissal time, so this will just remain as a full day for all students throughout the system. And then, the Professional Days are outlined with the circles. We would use the June 7th Professional Day more as a building time. Some people would have some graduation activities and that sort of thing. June 10th would be a Professional Development Day for the staff, and then June 11th would be probably more your traditional, like, work time, closing up shop in the classroom and that sort of thing.
Well, just to be clear, obviously, this Friday is a full flood school day for everybody. June 5th and 6th at the high school was supposed to be a half a day. It's now a full day, both days.
Yeah, the fourth, the high school typically has three days for exams, so the fourth, fifth, and sixth, and we had already determined the fourth would be a full day. So, the fifth, fourth, fifth, and sixth will all be full days. We'll just have one transportation route in the morning, rather than an early dismissal at 12:30, 10:30, and 10:30.
And then, for kindergarten through eighth grade, June 6th was going to be the last day of school and a partial day, which will now be a full day.
Correct.
And we will have enough minutes in all grade levels.
Correct.
What happens if we have one more snow day?
So, our plan really would be, at this time, if we do have another snow day, our next step would be to extend the school year to the June 7th. If we have another one, you never know, right? If we had another one, we'd look at extending minutes. So, our thinking was that extending that full day before adding minutes is really about more meaningful instruction rather than just adding like four minutes on to each school day for the students.
I realize we had a Teacher in Service Day this Friday. You can look at the calendar and say, "Well, we've just moved that to Tuesday, June 11th." Is that part of the teacher contract, that we have to keep that, that day, or could we have just done away with that Teacher in Service Day altogether?
Don can speak to the contract.
Right. And so, you certainly, the teachers are on, I want to say, 188-day contract. It's actually 191, but there's three vacation days in there, so it's really a 188-day contract. And so, that has nothing to do with student minutes, student hours, that's that part. And so, looking at potentially taking one of those days and adding it to that Wednesday and then working with the faculty on those other days to come up with creative ways rather than just sitting in the school building on, to make up those other days, find up, find different avenues for teachers to fulfill their contract without coming into the classroom. But, at this point in time, we are looking at that Wednesday as a Teacher in Service Day where before, or excuse me, the Tuesday before Monday would have been the last day, now it'll be Tuesday. If we would miss another day, then I believe, based on the fact that you, in board policy or in board actions, set the starting date and the ending date, we would come back to the board and ask you to change the calendar officially so that Friday will be the last day of school rather than Thursday. At this point in time, we have still met the criteria. We're starting the day we set, we're going to end the day we set, but if we were to miss one more day, I believe we would come back to the board and ask you for your authorization to do that. And then, you can also look and say, you know, what, do we want to go past into the next week or not? I think in the best interest of everybody and all the summer school plans and all those other things, I would then recommend we add minutes to the day rather than go into the following week with kids.
Thank you.
Are there any guidelines from the DPI for the potential to do online snow days in the future or to substitute online work for snow days? I know private schools have been doing that, and I don't remember who it was, but some-
Kowaskum did.
Kowaskum did, yeah. So, how are they able to do that, and is there any consideration for West Bend School District to possibly do that in the future so we don't have to go through this as much or at least make it not as complicated?
That, it's a good question because you, especially this year with all the snow days, you've heard of all different ideas, like live streaming on Facebook as far as providing instruction to virtual day that students are given eight hours, 68 hours of work and it counted, you know, they need to be responsible for that. When we've had conversations, it really is about a lot of things. You know, do we have, is our staff ready and our students ready for that? Do all of our students have a device and have internet access at home? So, those are some preliminary things that we'd have to figure out first prior to a virtual day, but my understanding is there'll be more guidance, you know, around that because that is being done. But, again, you have some data privacy issues, you know, that go along with it that we'd have to work through.
Yeah, it's, there are certainly many things to consider before moving forward with that, but I'm just glad at least it's being explored, so thank you.
I would think in the next several years, we'll be there, too. I don't know if we'll be there next year or not, but it won't be very long, and we'll be at that point where we would suggest the same thing.
As we go through implementation of our one-to-one policy-
Correct.
-I would think that would need to be, I would think, would need to be complete before we can offer a technology day, but-
If there's not any more conversation, discussion around this topic, then we have a communication plan that will share the information, again, more detailed as far as the high school and specific times as far as what the schedule looks like. That will be an additional, like, communication from the high school staff.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Well, we'll invite Nancy Kunkler up here, who's going to give us a communication update as relates to our referendum.
Good evening. I wanted to give you just a real quick update on our presentation and meetings that we've had in regard to the 2019 referendum. Our goal with these presentations and meetings is to provide the facts of the referendum and answer questions to a variety of audiences. First of all, in February thus far, we've done a number of meetings. Don, either a staff member or a board member, have made presentations to three municipalities that are in our school district. We will go to all of them by the end of March and talk to the town boards and city councils, village council about the referendum to provide them the facts, so in case they get any questions, they're able to provide their constituents with that information. We've also presented to the PTOs at all but one of our PTOs so far in February, and then also did a presentation at the Optimist Club, Chamber of Commerce Board, and Leadership West Bend. Also in February, we have completed two of our public informational meeting, open houses on February 18th and 20th, and those were open to the public. One was at the high school building, one was at Jackson Elementary. In those meetings, Don does a presentation about the referendum, providing the facts and information, and then tours are offered to any attendees that the principals lead. Then, we also have a team of people, of our partners in the project, an architect, a construction person, finance, to answer specific questions from the attendees in their areas of expertise. Don is also spending an hour at, in February, at the Jackson Area Community Center and also an hour at the West Bend Library. Those are less formal, don't include a presentation unless it's necessary there to answer questions. It's also to have something during the day for residents who don't want to go to an informational meeting at 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock in the evening. Coming up in March, we will complete our presentations to the municipalities that, within our school district, and we have five more of those to do in February. We'll go to Green Tree Elementary, PTO, and then Don will be making a presentation to a number of civic organizations in West Bend and Jackson. And finally, in March, we will do another, two more informational meetings, open houses, obviously at Jackson and the high schools. At Jackson on March 7th and the high schools on March 11th. Both of those are at 7:00 this time. And then, Don will also be spending some time, again, at the Jackson Area Community Center and the library. So, if you know of any other groups that would be interested to have a factual presentation made to them, we'll fit them in the calendar. Any questions?
Just one real quick comment, and that is, when we do our informational meetings at Jackson and at the high school, I know there have been people who have asked if we can do it as a question-and-answer type session at those meetings, and we've had, we've made the decision that we're going to present the information. We're going to do the slideshow, we're going to present the facts, and then we have tables off to the side where we have an architect, the architects there, we have the builders there, we have the finance- we have the builders there, we have the finance people both bear it as well as our finance team, and then Don is there. So rather than Don try to ask, answer questions from the 30,000-foot perspective, we do the presentation first. We go through all of the facts in the presentation and then encourage everyone who would like to ask any questions on anything to go over to the areas that have the specific information. Otherwise, you take a 10-minute presentation and potentially turn it into a 50-minute presentation. And the majority of people want the 10-minute presentation and they want the facts asked specifically on a topic, you know? So that's different than when I go to the library, then they can ask me any questions they like. Or once I'm done with the Qantas, they can ask me the questions. But when we do those informational meetings, that's the format that we're using.
And obviously, as something like the library, if there's a specific question about ADA compliance, just for example, and we can't answer it, you know, we would write that down and get the answer and email or call the person with the answer.
Great. Yes?
I certainly appreciate the fact that informational meetings are being done and presenting the facts and so on. I had one concern. I understand that there was some district publication urging people to vote yes on the referendum. And my understanding is that is not legal. To urge people to vote on, you know, April 2nd, that certainly is appropriate, but to urge people to vote a certain way is not legal. That's my understanding. So if that is happening, I hope, I just want to make sure the school district is doing what's legal.
And certainly, the district is well aware that that's not legal. And so absolutely no district employees, no district materials at any of our meetings, period, to encourage people to vote one way or the other. We had, we did have a public meeting, and so at a public meeting, there were people who were supportive of the referendum, had some vote yes material. But that was strictly individuals at a public meeting, just as if anybody could bring a vote yes on the referendum button or a vote no on the referendum button. Don wouldn't bring a vote yes or a vote no because Don is a public official. And we certainly understand the law and there will be no time ever that the school will be promoting a yes or a no vote.
I really appreciate your time. And Nancy's, I know, with you on several of these, Dave Ross as well, Andy's been to several. It takes a lot of time and it's sometimes during the workday, but oftentimes it's in the evenings. And so I really, really appreciate our superintendent and your leadership of getting the word out. I've been with Don on several of these and I can truly tell you, it is simply getting the facts out. It is not saying to vote one way or the other. It is getting the facts out and it's urging people in our community to go to our website, to get the facts, to come to these informational sessions, to get the facts. And it takes a ton of time. I think this is 100% and beyond in the spirit of transparency. We've all seen the materials. If you haven't or want to see them again, they're on the homepage of our district website. And again, it takes a ton of time to get this word out as far as the facts of our referendum that we've all proposed. So appreciate you very much, Don. Thank you. We'll move on to our reports, or excuse me, discussion on our Wisconsin Standards for Social Studies from Laura Jackson.
I have a whole group here with me tonight, so you guys can come on up. Let me just pull up the right presentation. Thank you all for the opportunity to talk to you tonight about the Wisconsin Social Studies standards. So we have a whole committee that has been, not really a committee, it's our work-study team of people who are interested in social studies. So with us tonight, we have Jack Chamberlain, Tanya Lohr, Angie Noiser, and Kevin Hyde. They represent a larger group of teachers who have been in some discussion about the social studies standards. So last year about this time, we brought the new science standards forward. The Department of Public Instruction last, had a, last created social studies standards in 1998. At that time, those standards had been studied and worked on during the 1990s and they were developed with vision for what might be and how we prepare our students. The new standards, as written, are really ready for our youngest students, so our kindergarten students, our pre-K students, which are classes of 2032, 2033, 2034, so that we can prepare them to be citizens when they graduate high school as well. So the, these new standards were released by the state in May of 2018 and we spent some time digging through and really looking at them. And so the team here is going to talk about some of the instructional shifts in those standards. There's a new strand that is different from the previous standards. Otherwise, there are, so the other five remain very similar as far as the strands or the areas of focus of the standards, but the individual standards have changed significantly. So the inquiry standard is this, or strand, is the strand that was added. And that really talks a lot about the focus. I'm going to hold off on sharing a lot about that because Angie Noiser is going to speak to the inquiry standards. But the framework for social studies education looks a little different with these standards. Kevin's going to talk about that a little bit.
Good evening. Real quickly, going over the structure of the new standards. If you don't have the standards in front of you, in the lower right-hand corner, there's a link to the digital version. I believe it's a PDF from DPI. Just looking at the structure of the standards so we can understand how they're organized, you'll notice that there's a red box over the discipline, which would be SS for social studies. And you can see on the far right part of the slide, you can see where that discipline is, social studies. The green is going to tell us the content area. So in this case, it's HIST for history. And then we're going to see the number one is going to indicate which standard this is. And so the new standards are, there's 27 new standards. This is going to seem like more because the A stands for a learning priority. Okay? So you might have anywhere between two learning priorities to four learning priorities. So it might look like more standards, but there's only 27. The E is going to indicate what grade band it is. So that's going to be the performance indicators. And so the performance indicators are going to tell our staff, our students, what is expected of students in that path, in that, you know, band of K2, 3, 5, 6, 8, or 9, 12. In the previous standards, we did not have this progression. Okay? So in the previous standards, they basically just had a list of, for instance, 12 history standards, and they would say by the end of fourth grade, here's what kids should know and be able to do. So in the new standards, there's a very nice progression that's going to isolate a specific concept or a skill and show how that skill is going to grow or that content knowledge is going to grow from K2 to 3, 5 to 6, 8 to 9, 12. So that's one of the big benefits of these new standards. You're also going to notice as we look at the individual strands, so for instance, if you look at the history standards or the poli sci standards, you're going to notice in the elementary band, DPI is going to make a suggestion for what grade level that should be taught at. So you might see for history, for cause and effect, you might see that it suggested that this might be taught at first grade or K through one. So that's one of the things to take notice of. So as Laura indicated, there are six strands. You have inquiry, behavioral sciences, econ, geography, history, and political science. You'll notice, and this image is taken from DPI, but the general idea, if you look at how everything kind of intersects, is that none of these subjects should be taught in isolation. For instance, at McLean, our students just learned about the fur trade and how that relates to Wisconsin being founded. Teaching the fur trade just in isolation as a history class, you wouldn't get the depth of understanding if you didn't include economics, the supply and demand piece of why are people coming here, which would be a geography standard when we look at pushes and pulls. So basically, when you see all these circles intersecting each other, it's implying that we should have all of our social studies classes, including all these multiple strands so that kids get a really good understanding of the material. The inquiry standard, which Angie's going to talk about next, the inquiry standard is meant to really shape what social studies instruction looks like in the classroom. So I'll go ahead and let Angie go ahead here and talk about the inquiry standards.
So the inquiry is new as a standard, standalone standard, but it's not standalone at all and I don't really consider it anything new. This is, if you've been with us through the adoption of the math standards and the science standards, in math standards, we have the math practice standards, in science, we have the science and engineering standards, which are focused on what students should do all throughout their, the other disciplines. So it's about how to think, manipulate, analyze the information. That's what the inquiry standards are for our social studies. They work with students not on the specific content of those different strands, but when you're in any of that content, how should you, how would you ask questions, research, analyze, report, and work with that information? So I don't consider it anything new, but it's now delineated and very clear, and I think it's going to happen. The inquiry standards also then tie really closely to what I think all of our sites have as a site plan. Part of our SIP is to work on literacy, particularly working on disciplinary literacy. The inquiry standards help social studies teachers have a focus in how to support those site goals as well.
The next strand is behavioral sciences. Real briefly, with looking at behavioral sciences, you'll notice there are four of them. And you'll notice at the end of each standard, in parentheses, it's a specific discipline within behavioral sciences. So for instance, behavioral standard one would be psychology. Second one would be sociology. The third one would be anthropology. So you can see how you have those very specific fields in the behavioral sciences. I think a lot of times when people hear social studies, we oftentimes think of history class. But when you look at the social studies or the social sciences, it's incredibly diverse and there's tons of different things within just that one subject area, which makes it really unique. The next strand is going to be economics. You'll notice as you look through the standards, you'll notice that some, in fact, Jackson is going to come up here in a second to talk about history. Some of the strands are very content-heavy. Some are more skills-based and some are a little bit of a mix of all those. When we look at our econ standards, those are the ones that are much more, they're much more content-heavy. So when you look at your econ standards, you're going to see, the first standard is going to cover your traditional things like incentives and opportunity costs. Second standard is going to introduce you to microeconomics, things like supply and demand and things like that. The third standard is going to introduce our students to macroeconomics, which is looking at the large economy as a whole. Our fourth standard is going to look more at the role of government, so that's where we're going to see things like fiscal policy and monetary policy being talked about. And then our fifth standard is going to focus a lot on things like trade and just interdependence that we have with each other. Geography, once again, is going to have five standards. You can take a closer look at that at pages 23 to 27. Once again, geography is going to be more than things just like maps. I think oftentimes when we think about geography, we tend to think about just maps. And while that is the first standard, as we look through standards two through five, we notice that it has a lot of other really fascinating things for our students to study. And once again, there's the really wonderful thing about these new standards, just the progression that it has. So when we look at any number of those geography standards, we're going to see what's expected of our K2 students, our 3, 5 students, 6, 8, and 9, 12. And it really helps our teachers kind of understand what's required of them and how we're building that student for success when they leave our high schools in 12th grade.
And you just look at the verb rhythm, analyze, examine, evaluate. It's a much higher level of getting students engaged with this content than just memorization.
All right. We're going to have Jack come here and talk to you guys about the history standards.
Thanks, Kevin. Good reminder to have the history standards come last in that this is the one that our parents and grandparents always asked us about our class and they always called it history. We are, as social studies teachers, responsible for, you know, a vast range of departments and buildings on a college campus. And I think that's important to remember. They're not just types of math, they're types of science, you know, ways in which you study it. These are actually separate disciplines all bundled into one. And this one also probably requires the greatest deep breath and leap of faith because this isn't, as my grandfather would have called it, full of what color was George Washington's white horse types of standards. This is big thinking where you need to use background knowledge in order to demonstrate what you understand. And I think it's a really, really fundamental and important change. The emphasis isn't on the memorized evidence. The emphasis is on how do you use evidence to determine cause and effect? Probably the heart of history is causation and the way causes turn into effects which in turn become new causes. And we need to kind of help our students winnow their way to those answers. Evaluating patterns of continuity versus patterns of change, another really, really essential skill using historical understandings. Connecting past events, people, and ideas to the present. Maybe one of the hardest ones, I think there's lots of truisms about this that aren't exactly accurate about the way the past directly influences the present or certainly influences the present, but those outcomes are of course real and something our students need to be transferring to their understanding of our current world. Angela talked about those inquiry standards in that last place where as historians and we're training kids to think like historians, we can have them evaluate primary and secondary sources, which is this? Why is it that type of source? That also takes us right back to the heart of the inquiry model where kids are digging into information, evaluating their own questions. So these are, these are very exciting and they tie into the rest of the social studies. Thank you.
And the last strand would be political science. There are four standards in the political science realm. And we're going to see that the first one is going to be on democratic principles and ideals, where students are going to learn what does it mean to be a good citizen? They're going to move into rights, privileges, and responsibilities that they have in society. The third standard is going to focus on political and civic institutions. And the fourth standard will be to hopefully help them develop and employ those important skills for civic literacy so that they can learn what it is to be a good citizen, not only in their schools, but in their, in their, in their community, in their states, and in their country and globally as well. So that would be the very last strand that we have, making all six.
So when we talked as a K-12 team about should we move these forward to the board for adoption, there was a brief discussion about writing our own and what all that would include. And the standards are focused enough to really guide direction and the learning progressions as, within the document, further elaborate on each of the standards, but also in a more developmental way. So K2, this is what this looks like. 3, 5, this is what political science looks like. So after some discussion, the entire team supported bringing those, the standards forward to the board for adoption. And you can see some of the reasons for support up there. Additionally, we started looking a little closer at the K5 scope and sequence and the Department of Public Instruction provides a framework for that. You don't need to adopt the scope and sequence entirely, but it was, we had some very good discussion about the strengths with the K5 team about the strengths of our current program and what a vision for social studies instruction, K5, would look like should these standards go forward. At this time, are there any questions? And any one of our team members will come up and be happy to address any of the questions you have.
Comparison of socialism with capitalism. Where would that be? Would that come up in the economic, educational environment or would that come up in political science?
So if you're, you said between socialism and capitalism?
Mm-hmm.
It's not specifically going to standards like that?
Actually, you wouldn't do a comparison of the two of them because one is a political system and one is an economic system. So there wouldn't be a direct comparison between the two? It would be a comparison between socialism and, wait, did you ask capitalism and socialism? Nope, okay, you're right. That is the direct, I thought you said democracy and socialism. Got it. Got it.
The reason I bring that up, and I was concerned about it, is there have been studies done, and it's a growing trend amongst our, I guess, younger population to favor socialism, which is contrary to our economic system that we have. In other words, government control versus private control of private property and so on. So I just was wondering where that was, and I'd just like to look into, I guess, the, what is being taught there, so.
So a good question. As we look at our courses at the upper levels, that if the new standards are adopted, we would be then doing the examination of what's currently in line and what's not in line with the new standards. So the idea that you're, the ideas that you're talking about would be looked at both under the political science spectrum and the economic spectrum. And, but relative to the new standards, I'm not sure that it will fit within our current, within the new standard structure.
So Laura, these standards will be brought back for approval at a future board meeting?
Correct. So the, we want to be, have the time now to address any questions. And to address any questions, then they would be brought forward to, at the next board meeting for adoption, after we've addressed your questions. Kevin, did you look at the specific standard it's in?
Right, so the, it would be economic standard 4A. That would be, that would cover economic systems and the allocation of resources. That would be on page 21, is where that would be. It's not specifically laid out in those terms, but it's just, it's listed as different economic systems and the allocation of resources, which is where you would find discussions on capitalism, socialism.
Ms. President?
Yes.
Laura, am I correct in assuming that there's significant flexibility within the standards, so that if we adopt the DPI-recommended standards, the district still has significant flexibility to take those standards and go a little bit over here, as long as we meet the overall scope of what the intent is all about for the, for the standards? That, I mean, so we're not adopting, we're adopting specific standards, but within those specific standards, there is some local district flexibility as well.
So we would look then at the standards to see what are individ, like, we talked about the learning progressions, what are the learning targets that we would have for each course? So that if you look at those big broad standards that were on the solid colored pages of the PowerPoint? So if you look at these, within there are learning progressions and smaller targets for each level. It allows districts the flexibility to say, okay, we're going to operate within that, and these are the, to borrow from another area of study, these are the assessment boundaries that we'll work within, so our students are getting to, going to be proficient here, here, and here.
One other comment I would make in that is, we're looking at standards. Curriculum is always a local decision, so there's not anything in this presentation from approving these standards that talk about specific curriculum. That's a different decision above and beyond standards. And sometimes it's confused that as we look at standards, we're approving a, a different curriculum, but it has nothing to do with curriculum. This is strictly standards.
They will guide our curriculum development in the future, but they are not a script for us to follow. Other questions?
I always like to ask the teachers that were involved, you have degrees in this subject matter, as you look through these new standards, are you excited about them? I know it says there was 100% kind of agreement that they should be adopted, but should there be edits to them? Should, you know, you talked, briefly talked about writing your own. Any comments there?
I'm very excited about these standards, because I think that they recognize the really important role that social studies plays in helping students develop into citizens of our country as well as of our globe. I think in the last, maybe eight or 10 years in education, there's been kind of a push to make social studies just kind of like the lower than reading and math. There's been such an emphasis on reading and math, and it seems like the pendulum is starting to move back towards, okay, but the well-rounded student who graduates does need to be prepared to put that reading and math into action, and really that is your social studies and your science. And so I'm really excited about these standards, because to me, it emphasizes the importance that social studies has in preparing students to go into their world.
Good.
I like the vertical articulation that they offer. I think our, having come from the elementary before I was at Silverbrook, we were laughing in direction, K-4, we have the W K C, the forward exam, whatever it's been called all these years, at 4th grade was the only target, so we didn't always look at that target until 4th grade. And this delineates the role of K-1, 2, 3 in getting this prepared for those, for those people that need to be, not just specific for the test, but maybe to that, that they're getting those things developed in their own.
Progression also puts us in a place to collaborate, K-12, which is fascinating to have the standards do that first, and then the collaboration have to come by necessity and the other way around. So I find that to be very exciting. I, like I said earlier, the commitment to the broad field of social studies is also what's truly exciting about it. I'd like to amend my last statement.
Great, well, thank you for all your hard work and being a part of the team and for being here tonight to present this to us. So we'll look for this in future board agenda, and when we're ready, Laura, we'll make sure that happens. Great, thank you. We're going to move on to our first reading of Board Policy 432. This is somewhat of a significant change. If you open up the attachment, you'll see a lot of edits, so we couldn't just fast-track this one. But this has to do with parents requesting their, their student be in a different elementary school than maybe the school that their house or their place of residence would put them, and kind of the process for that. I'll turn it over to Laura if you want to kind of briefly go through this, and then we'll come back for a second reading next time.
Correct. So briefly, we needed to be a little more clear in our delineation amongst different levels. Our 4K has different boundary lines than our elementaries, and, because they were, they are in different areas. We have a community-based 4K program. It also allows us to address the K-4 sites differently than the 9-12, and really spell out the process for each one.
I shouldn't have just assumed this is coming back for a second reading. We should talk about it now to see if we all agree to bring it back for second reading. So any questions, discussion on this?
So just, mine is more about the high school questions. So in the past, I, probably maybe four or five years ago, so long before you or Don were here, you know, pretty much the students, you were either east or west, based on your date of birth or your day of whatever, even odd, thank you. Now I know that people can request, due to different family circumstances, my dad went to east, I want to go to east, whatever the deal is. How do we maintain that one school doesn't get larger than the other? You know, like, right now, I know west is, is larger, because some of our students will specifically, just because I know this because of dance, but like, you know, west, dance, they have to compete at a D-1 level versus east competes at a D-2, because I think it's a difference of like 90 students, but I'm not sure if that's the exact number, so don't quote me, but.
So each year, we look at the number requesting in, and you're right, the, the current practice has, and we really haven't altered that. It, it is on a case-by-case basis, but once, if I'm the oldest sibling, once I'm in, my youngers can follow. So we have, as the high school requests all come to Mr. Kirkagard for approval, we are watching that balance along those lines. So once, when, a request is not necessarily always 100% honored. We are in a very, very unique situation in our high schools. It's not like they're, it's there across town, within the same physical space, students have classes, even though there, an east student might have classes in west and vice versa, because it's, it works out best for that particular student. But the, where we see the shift in the numbers, there are a number of ways that that impacts, and we do need to monitor that. We are more closely monitoring that than we had in the past.
Nancy, just another, we do look at it every year, and so this year, there's a few more going to west than east. The imbalance, though, isn't necessarily because of open enrollment, it's just that at this point in time, we have more kids who are in west than east. And so if we were looking at, I want 75 to come in and 25 to go the other direction, then we'd have to make some decisions. But at this point in time, it's, it's just a handful of kids wanting to go one direction or the other, and we have tried to honor that request as much as we can. But unfortunately, west is larger than east now, and it does have an impact on some of our athletic teams. And if that continues to, to go more west than east, then we are going to have to make some adjustments. But not many of them are, as a result of open enrollment in or out, it really is based on just that there's more going to west now than east.
So we've probably had this problem in the past. I mean, this probably has happened to us, it's probably an ebb and flow type thing, and at some point in time, east probably had 87 more students than west. So I mean, I guess just when you're hearing that in the community, like, oh, west is so much better than east, not true. And it sounds like, you know, we're maintaining and balancing that pretty well.
First, it should also be noted that for sports, it's individual to the sport, what those lines are, those numbers are, is individual to the sport. So for example, in football, they were both D-1, but it will vary by sport.
Laura, the initiated request for an inter-district transfer, where it says that parents will submit their request to the superintendent, do they do that just via email, or are they supposed to get a specific form, and they submit the form to the superintendent?
So for the K-4, there's a specific exhibit, and are you looking at the 9-12? I'm sorry, I don't have it up on the.
That's actually preschool and elementary schools, parent guardian initiator request. It doesn't specifically say that there's an actual form that they're supposed to submit. It just says they're supposed to request for a transfer, must be made in writing and submitted to the superintendent. Just wondering if we need to be more specific.
And put the exhibit in there instead of, because it's in the AR, I believe.
Okay.
Exhibit is listed in the AR on the, like, how to do that. And so.
I think that could be helpful directly on the policy, refer to exhibit A or something.
We can add that in, refer to exhibit, I think it is.
I don't know what the rest of the board thinks, if that would just be more clear.
I mean, anything to make it easier for people who are looking for information.
So we'll add that perens in there.
Okay.
For the elementary.
And we have said in the past, too, that parents can go to the website and find that form. It should be pretty clearly marked.
Yeah.
On our website.
Once we finish this process, it will be awesome.
Thank you.
Yes.
Why was the deadline for submitting a request moved up from the 31st of March to the first Friday in March?
So we, I believe at the last policy committee, we discussed that a little bit. We had gone back and with the administration and the, the full impact of the number of, so at the elementary level, the swings that happen with that, in order to really work with the full impact of that, they needed, the administrators needed more time.
As we look to try to identify how many sections we have at each grade level, the, we, the March 31st becomes kind of a difficult date for us to, to get the HR, to get the, the information out to, to the classroom. It's five sections, first grade or four sections, and so it really becomes logistics more than anything else, just to try to get it earlier. And we also make exceptions. So it's not a hard-fest rule, if somebody asks for a consideration in June, we'll look at that as well. But then it becomes more based on how many sections we currently have, and if that will make a, you know, 28 in first grade, we don't want that to happen.
Is that possibility for an exception in here someplace or not? Or is that just kind of understood? I don't know.
And I apologize that I don't have it right in front of me. I believe that I, I'd have to look at it.
Maybe it's in the AR, I don't know. I.
I was going to say, there is an AR associated with this, I wonder if it's.
And I did share that at the policy committee.
So I, I think it's right here, though. So it says, "Requests received after the first Friday in March will be added to a waiting list enacted upon prior to the start of the requested school year. The superintendent or designee will give final approval to the transfer request following collaboration with the building principals." So it is in there, they can still ask, it's just not as much of an automatic as it was before.
So I think if we add a reference or cross-reference to the AR, like Tiffany said, I personally don't think that changes the edits that the policy committee has done. Are we in agreement to that and?
To the specific exhibit.
To, to a specific exhibit that exists as far as the request form. Are we okay bringing this back next week or at our next board meeting for a second reading? Okay, great, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Coming to the home stretch here, a quick committee of a whole report. We had a committee of a whole meeting on February 11th to review our policies associated with acceleration and advanced placement, something that Laura and her team have been working on for several months, kind of received an update on their progress there from, from her team, and talked a lot about the acceleration portion of that, and then we're going to come back in the next month or so to continue that discussion and potentially submit something maybe to the policy committee in the future if there's any changes. We'll move on to our superintendent's report.
Just a couple of quick comments. Laura has been working with the students, parents, and teachers at Pathways to try to make sure that we have a smooth transition. We'll bring a formal report back soon as far as how things are materializing. Nancy brought up that we already, or we've had numerous visits with our presentations on the referendum, we'll continue to go forward with that, truly trying to make it as informational as possible, not trying to sway people, but just give them the information. Jennifer has, Jen has done a remarkable job working with the calendar to try to come up with the hours and minutes necessary, and also is working diligently on bringing a proposal to us for the 2021 calendar. And so that hopefully, once we have that 2021 calendar, we have enough things in place that we'd like to continue just roll that without having major changes from year to year, that this is kind of the format that we would like to use, tweak it as opposed to significant changes. But well, she's working with the committee for that, and we'll bring some recommendations or first reading of a proposed calendar not too far down the road. And the last thing is, I've been working with the city, the YMCA, and the Boys and Girls Club to, to try to figure out a better way to use our Fund 80 funds. So Fund 80 is a fund that we have that's designed for things above and beyond the school year, and how we spend those really is to enhance opportunities for everyone. And so working with those three organizations to try to, to do a better job as how we spend our Fund 80 funds.
Great, any questions for Superintendent Kirkagard? Our board calendar for the month of March, we're back to the first and third Mondays for our regular board meetings, so we do have another board meeting this, this, a week from today on March 4th. We've got a policy committee meeting, I believe, before that, and a closed session meeting after that, I believe, on the 4th. And then there's some, a lot of referendum things, as you saw in Nancy's presentation, but open houses at Jackson and up at the high school on the 7th and 11th, and plenty of other meetings that Don will be going to. And if any board member would like to attend those with Don, like I said, I've been to several of them, he does a great job. The questions that we get are interesting. I was at the community center with Don today and Lady Keem, and she wanted to talk about asbestos, for instance, and I think that was the first time we'd really had an in-depth discussion on asbestos. But it's, you know, these, these are great opportunities for board members to get out and hear the concerns or questions from the community. So if you want to attend any of those with Don, I would say reach out to Nancy, and she can set you up. Another board meeting on the 18th. We also have a closed session on Thursday this week. Board members should be aware of that, those who can attend. And any questions on the calendar? Any other future agenda items, questions for follow-up? I do need signatures from Kurt, Tony, and Chris before you leave.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Nancy, second by Chris. Any further questions, discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.
Students, any one of us can sign your forms, if you need them, sign.